Okay, this time I will recall to order the Central School District's special meeting dated Wednesday, May 13, 2015. The record reflects that all board members are here, including myself. I found that should be late, I had a work issue. Tom Bellotti is not present and Teresa Monahan is actually hospitalized last night, so she will not be here today. What she's doing, much better. And I expect her to be here next meeting. If we could stand up.
(inaudible)
Okay, the only item we have on the agenda for this evening is discussion regarding turf fields. Unfortunately, I was not part of most of the executive session, so I believe the money may have already been moved by the sort of the -- Maureen has vice president.
Well, I think we probably wanted to just review the process of what's going to happen as far as putting or replacing the turf fields. I know we have a proposition up on Tuesday, which is probably a little vague for everyone. Let me listen to say. But I think the process going forward was the proposition will go up on Tuesday, the money and, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Adams, when I say this, the $850,000, which comes out of the capital fund, that's the targeted amount. And I guess we can kind of relate that to if you did an addition to your house and you went to bid out a, you know, you had somebody to come in and put a roof on your house and they give you a bid, you know, and you go and say, okay, I'll get the mortgage for that. And you go forward and you know, somebody else comes in and they got a better product or something like that, you might have to go more money, might be less money, whatever the case may be. But what will happen is the proposition will go up. We will then research all the different types of fields and infills. And the board will then make a decision on what will then go out to bid. So that would all be approved before the bidding process even went forward with what the board would want to see on the fields at the middle school. I guess it might, at that point, if it's more money, might come to having to go to another vote to ask for additional funds if needed. If not, if it comes over under the gate, $850,000, then I guess we're good. But I know there's board members that wanted to say things, so, Moni, if you wanted to start?
Sure. Thanks, Maureen. Just a few things. I called a board meeting for today because we felt that after some of the conversations we had at the last meeting last Tuesday, we still had some things to resolve and discuss, especially legal precautions, ballot questions, financial questions, et cetera. So I'm glad we went through some of this earlier in executive with Mr. Bronson. And this public section of the meeting is to basically share some information again that we're looking at. Basically, you know, in case anyone missed anything we said last time, Dr. Adams presented regarding some of the different options of turf fields, including non-synthetic and synthetic options and different options of infill, which is the second layer underneath the turf layer. And but the information was from particularly one vendor. For now, there will be extra time spent whether the proposition passes or not, there will be extra time regardless, to investigate other products from other vendors and to obtain specs from all of them in order to choose, hopefully, the safest possible product for the children to play on. The other piece of information that we discussed was possibly that those products may cost more than the proposition spells out, but that one of two things would happen. We either need to put a new referendum with another proposition that asks the voters for more capital funds to be allocated, or we may find other possible funds in our budget to complete or supplement the amount that's going out on this proposition. So I also have today, originally, the reason I called for this besides having the discussions we have is in order for us to hear from some experts in the field, so they can give us some scientific material to look into, some testimonials. And this way, the board can make educated decisions moving forward, once we're all understanding better what the true risks are, you know, what's media propaganda and what's facts. Because I felt that was very important for us to be clear on that. Unfortunately, the meeting got scheduled for today. I'm told people had conflicts, it couldn't be done when the speaker was lined up for tomorrow. So here we are, without the speaker, counting our own information, but I think that we still need that information. So we really need to hear from, you know, experts in the area, from scientists and from everyone in that field. So I only have one statement from this toxicologist, who actually asked me to read it for you. And I have copies for everyone, so for these, you could please pass this. And that will really summarize pretty much what the concerns are in terms of scientific evidence that's already out there. Not so much what, you know, TV is saying, but what scientists are saying. This is by Dr. David Brown, so you all have his credentials on the second page or on the bottom of the page. And he says to you, and he knows that I'm reading this tonight, "If one looks at the number of studies on synthetic turf fields that have attempted to estimate the risk to young students and athletes from the exposures to chemicals contained in the fields, you will see the problem. The findings of each of the studies are based on a startling limited number, 2 to 12. Actual samples of crumb rubber, each weighing no more than a few ounces, on small number of fields, most without any testing of the crumb rubber, four to six fields at most. There is no study that's comprehensive, systematic assessment of the risk. Instead, a natural experiment is being conducted in which thousands of children are being exposed on playing fields to rubber. One, known to contain carcinogens, and two, documented to produce cancer in the workers in the tire manufacturing plants. The results of this human health experiment is to determine whether there is enough exposure to carcinogens in the synthetic turf fields to cause cancer in the children who play on these fields. Now that there is strong indication that cancer has appeared in one segment of the student groups that have played on synthetic turf, namely soccer goalies in particular, as well as others, the experiment is allowed to continue with health departments standing by until they can obtain positively statistical confirmation of the cancer hazard. Crumb rubber infill contains a large number of chemicals known to be toxic to humans. These include chemicals associated with cancer, asthma, and other adverse health effects. There is no safe threshold, level, for exposure to carcinogens. The only way to eliminate cancer risk from these chemicals is to eliminate exposure. No existing study disputes the inherent hazard of these chemicals. The studies simply draw varying conclusions regarding the total amount that these chemicals pose to children who are likely to be exposed when they play on artificial turf fields. The bottom line is that nobody knows exactly what the mix of chemicals is in any given field containing crumb rubber made from recycled tires. The tires themselves are manufactured with a wide variety of chemicals. Fields may contain tires from a variety of sources, and there is no source of information to identify exactly what chemicals and in what quantity are present in any given field. No entity providing the crumb rubber provides any quality control, identification of the source, or an analytical analysis of the contents of the rubber used. Children are more susceptible than adults to a variety of environmental hazards for several reasons. Children's organ systems are developing rapidly. A toxic exposure during a critical window of development can have lifelong consequences. Children's detoxification mechanisms are also immature, so an exposure that might not have an important effect on an adult could have an important effect on a child. In addition, children have many years in which to develop disease. Cancer in particular is a disease with long latency. Disease can develop many years after exposure. For this and other reasons, it is particularly important to avoid carcinogenic exposures during childhood. There has been no comprehensive assessment of the data on cancer among athletes exposed to crumb rubber from artificial turf exposures. However, the evidence collected to date indicates a basis for concern and an urgent need for closer scrutiny. Most notable is that the ratio of lymphomes and lipemias is the reverse of that expected in the general population for that age group. I hope this is clear. The statement means the incidence in these players is unlike the incidence in the general public. It's reversed. Such a reverse in the pattern of cancers present is considered a signal that an active chemical carcinogen is present. Given the high stakes, it is prudent to take action to protect children from this known hazard rather than wait for definitive evidence of harm. Thank you for your attention. David Brown, a doctor of science, public health toxicologist, director of the Public Health Toxicology for Environment and Human Health, past chief of Environmental Epidemiology and Occupational Health at Connecticut's Department of Health, past deputy director of the Public Health Practice Group of ATS/DR at the National Centers for Disease Control and Prevention CDC of Atlanta. So I just saw this as a statement that is from a world-renowned expert who says, "We better be safe than sorry," and take those hazards seriously. And he allowed me to read this to you tonight.
Take them, Moni.
Now, now? Okay. So things that I wanted to review in, I guess, in the executive session as well as now, talk about it in the public session.
A lot of parents were coming up to me asking, "Well, what exactly are we voting on?" It says remove and replace, so what are we replacing it with? We know there are a lot of concerns out there.
So one of the things that we entertained upstairs was whether or not it's too late to pull the ballots, and it is too late to pull the ballots. What I learned was that there will be a very rigorous bid process that will be done, so there will be specs that are approved by the board, and it's up to the board to determine what those specs are. So if we as a board decide that it is very important for us, as I hope it will be, to do what's the safest possible for the kids, meaning go for something organic or something natural, that we as a board will have that responsibility to make sure that those are the specs that are put out to bid. So if those are the specs that are put out to bid, then something like crumb rubber would not be a bid that would be received because that won't match those criteria. That's what I was assured of upstairs. The other thing that, so, you know, the question is, well, the wording is vague currently as it is in the proposition, but this is kind of the process that we will go through. I can tell you where I stand on the matter. I believe that the burden of proof to put in a rubber field needs to be, you need to prove to me that this is safe. There is enough chatter out there, there is enough controversy, enough dialogue, that raises that level of concern to a critical level. The kids that are playing on this, as stated in this statement, are still developing. There has not been, there has been a literature review, but that is not the same thing as a meta-analysis. And in fact, that literature review called for more research. But again, there has been no meta-analysis looking at a cohort of children and following them up for decades, because to prove an environmental antigen causes cancer takes a long time. It's not something that happens in 10 years. A lot of these studies are from 2008, and they've all used different methodologies. There's no consistency in the studies that are out there, and they have very limited scope. They test four fields, that's not generalizable, because different fields will have different chemicals, different interplay of those chemicals. And we have to remember that these tires are toxic, and they are hazardous materials. And when they get chopped up, they lose that hazardous assignment. So my perspective, if this gives any insight into how I would vote for these specs, is that my perspective is rubber crumb is not an option. And so let me be very clear about that. For me, rubber crumb is not an option. I think the burden of proof has yet to be proven that this is safe, and I will not feel comfortable unless a meta-analysis has been done following these kids out for at least 20 more years. 20 years from, I'm that person, I'm 40-something, I won't give my exact age, I am 40-something years old and I played on grass. So I would be that person that would present with the cancers, or present, or even neurodevelopmental. You're looking at kids that are still in elementary school, still in middle school, still developing. These are neurotoxins. These could potentially be immunologic things that cause immunologic maldevelopment in them or affect their endocrine systems. So my perspective, if this gives any insight for you on how to vote, unfortunately, we can't put anything else out there other than tell you what our opinions are, is that I would not support specs that say crumb rubber. And I guess that's all the insights that I can offer. Next.
Well, all I'll say is, first of all, it's tough following two medical doctors. But I think the thing that we have to understand as a community and certainly as a board of education, that we recognize that the two fields do need to be replaced. I don't think that there's any dispute of that, and I think the public has to understand. Now, having said that, I think it's also important that the public realize that this board of education and this administration is committed to doing the job with respect to project safety. Because I think that we all feel and we take the responsibility very seriously that everyone really wants the best for our kids, the best safety, not only in the classroom, but I think also out on the fields as well. And we obviously have had information brought to us from individuals that have impeccable credentials. It's making us take a serious look. In the past, I think that we as a board, and I can speak to this because having sat on this board when the fields were first put in 10 years ago, we didn't have the scrutiny that we have today. We didn't have the information that we have today, and we relied on the process. But now, things have been brought to our attention, and I can tell you that being one of seven, I believe all the other board members are committed to doing this the right way, the safe way, and the best way for this community. With respect to the medical issues, it's amazing the information that you have here. And I think the fact that we have at this particular juncture two medical doctors sitting on the board, I believe that the public will be well-served, because when it comes to certain issues with respect to health and safety, we certainly are going to listen to what board members have to say.
You're done?
I think Craig said it all. I mean, you had the same comments that I had, that the fields do need to be replaced. They serve us well. And I know, you know, just moving forward as far as, you know, the turf fields, the turf fields do serve us well as far as the different, you know, all the sports teams that we can use those fields 24 hours a day and, you know, have our tournaments and things. So, you know, certainly, if we're going to err on the side of anything, we're going to err on the side of caution, so we'll make sure we look at everything closely.
I agree. Unfortunately--
Into the microphone. I agree, and, you know, I apologize again for not being part of the executive session, or at least most of it, or what have you.
Overview?
Overview?
Who says it?
Is that what it says? Thanks, Craig.
I'm not that smart.
And of course, you know, Moni bringing it to, and more leads to our attention. Again, we have a lot of research to be, to do and to look at, and I would hope that we could get, I know Mr. Brown was, I guess, available tomorrow. Unfortunately, we couldn't have the meeting then, but it would be helpful to get the input from the experts such as Dr. Brown.
I think to clarify, different speaker.
Oh, is it different? Okay, okay.
If you thought it down as well. I just want to, I just want to explain that these people are very hard to get in one place that works for the majority of board members to be here in the administration. So he sent the statement because he couldn't be present to begin with, and the speaker that would have been available for tomorrow, we couldn't have our board meeting tomorrow because of reasons I don't know. So at this point, he's not the speaker that we were having, because he's away. But we can invite him at another point to speak as well, so he's not, he's not out of the picture. If you guys feel it's important to hear from him directly, I'd be more than happy to coordinate.
Yeah, well, that's it. I think we just need to, you know, decide as a board what speakers to have so we can get, you know, an independent view of everything.
I mean, these people, yeah, these people don't work for any side or the other. They're toxicologists or public health experts.
How much do they cost?
I'm pretty sure they volunteer. I'm pretty sure they volunteer.
Well, you asked them to come tomorrow.
I'll find, no, he's away. He's definitely away, but others were going to be available tomorrow.
I do feel like I need to share one more thing that I forgot to say, which is that I don't think that we can say definitively that these are safe or unsafe, but I think there's enough controversy out there that we need to err on the side of caution. I don't know if I already said that.
Absolutely. I think the last thing that we wanted to talk about was just, we had discussed possibly a statement to be put on.
Is that correct?
Dr. Adams, a statement to be put on to the website, just, I guess, talking about the, you know, the process and what's going to happen and how the proposition is up there, but that we will be approving these specs before it goes out to bid. I'm not sure how we want to go about writing that right now.
Yeah, we don't have to write it right now, but we just need to really encapsulate what was-- Yeah, that Mr. Bronson was going to work on a statement and run it by the board members, and that's what we, where we had left off.
So what kind of assurances can we get? That the specs will be reviewed? That there will be a public education meeting, or experts will be involved?
Well, a board meeting, at a board meeting.
At a board meeting, there'll be experts.
I don't, I mean, unless we want to do it that way, but I don't, I don't think we're talking about, or if we're all a public presentation, as in, you know, we present the budget. Present the budget, or, I mean, the board meetings aren't public, so.
Okay.
Either. First to ask questions, right? That was the point, that we would have the public health experts speak to us as a board in public, with the public present, but we as board members can have a question and answer with that first.
Like any presentation, absolutely, yeah.
That was the plan.
Right, right, exactly. Sorry, first we have to get the proposition approved, right? Then we're going to move forward.
Well, at this point, because it couldn't coincide with a speaker being here--
You're right, if it doesn't, if the proposition doesn't even become, doesn't get approved, then we're still going to move forward.
And the vote is Tuesday.
The next proposition.
Right. At this point, it's going to happen after the vote.
It's going to be, it's going to be a process. So the next process is, we'll decide if we want speakers to come in, and, you know, and what the presentation would be and whatnot, and that cannot be moved forward.
In a perfect world, it would have happened here today or tomorrow before the vote, but now it's not happening before the vote, so.
But I think the important thing is, it's the assurance of the public that this board of education is going to do our due diligence to ensure that this is looked at very, very carefully and that things are scrutinized. And I think that's what we want to invade the public.
Absolutely.
I just want to clarify something. Dr. Howard, earlier, I think you said that the specs would be approved, but just a few minutes ago, you said reviewed. I just wanted to be clear that the board will approve the specs before they go out for bid. Okay?
Anything else?
So, as we have discussed, I'm going to have to do this, a couple of presentations, first of all, the first presentation did not include the proposition at all, and when it finally included the proposition, I had voted, I think I voted yes, we need to go back to the record, I don't know if I abstained or voted yes. Later on, March 21st, I voted yes, with the proposition included. And the wording of rubber crumb was removed and sand from the proposition, but because I don't really know what we're using, and we haven't gone this far, and all this was done very last minute, I would like to rescind that vote, so, because I don't feel comfortable voting yes to something, I'm not sure what it is. So just want that for the record, please.
Okay. Any other, there's no other discussion items? The board members are done? Meeting will be adjourned? Wait, hold on, I'm sorry. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
There's no public participation in this one?
No, not at all. We can, we can--
Well, regardless of whether there's any public portion of the information, I just want to let you all know that tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, you'll have a meeting.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
So anyone who's interested, you can get the information from me tomorrow at 7:00 PM.
We have to have public participation.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to have public participation.
To modify the agenda.
To modify the agenda, to include public participation. And we apologize if--
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, then I'll do it again.
Hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Before, before, there's, again, public participation, it's a, we're going to limit it, it's not going to be a 30-minute session, but three minutes per person. There's respectful of the policies with respect to speaking about personnel staff or children within the district. In addition, address your, address your comments to the president of the board. Again, you know, we don't do a back and forth, but, you know, we're always here after the meetings for a while, mill you around. So just your name and your, we know, but your name and affiliation.
Okay, my name is Melissa Hesjelary. I have children in the Central School District, and I'm also on the Charingley PTA, although I am here just speaking for myself tonight. I am addressing the president, who is, I believe, Mrs. DeFalcio right now, President DeFalcio, so I would like to invite you and the rest of the board and any parents who are interested to the Aramont Village Hall tomorrow night at 7:00 PM. We will have a guest speaker, Patricia J. Wood, the executive director of Grassroots and Environmental Education. Mrs. Wood is a visiting scholar at Delft University, where she lectures on environmental exposures and related health issues in the School of Nursing. Mrs. Wood also works with the Environmental Health Division of the New York State Department of Health, producing public information materials and serves on the Governor's Advisory Council on Sustainability and Green Procurement. Mrs. Wood is the co-producer of the documentary film, Our Children at Risk, which explores the latest scientific research linking environmental toxins to children's health problems. She's also the author of the Child Safe Guidelines in the Child Safe Schools, which promote and provide a framework for a comprehensive approach to reducing environmental toxins in schools and helping to heal. She's the author of a book for parents of children with life-threatening illnesses. It's tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, the Aramont Village Hall, all are welcome. Please come out and learn a little bit more about one side of the issue. We won't have a speaker on both sides, but this woman is very, well, very knowledgeable, and she'll be able to answer all of our questions at the end of the session. So please come out.
It's on Charingley Road, correct?
It's on, it's on Charingley, right, and which is Spook Rock turns into Charingley, it's just up the street from Charingley Elementary School.
Thank you.
Sing your name, please.
And your affiliation, and affiliation.
I might break into karaoke, you can give your mind. Okay. So Nick Lalo, former board member, very short period of time. And with, stop it. And I have a child in the district-- And I have a child in the district who happens to be a goalkeeper in soccer. Had, who's here today, but earlier, but you guys ran late, I wanted to meet. A little background on me for the group. Other than being on the board for a short amount of time, I do have a Master of Science in Occupational Health and Safety, Environmental Management, and that included training in advanced toxicology, nowhere near the credentials that Dr. Biggum had mentioned about that challenge, so that was fantastic. I am a certified Ocean 501 instructor, and have managed EHS, Environmental Health and Safety programs for major divisions in two Fortune 500 companies and the United States Army. So with that background, I bring this to you. The anecdotal evidence of the negative health effects of our original turf is concerning. Because of this many schools and towns around the country are now either halting new installation or replacing their ground tire rubber turf fields with other material. This concern is enough to warrant a deeper investigation. Some of this is redundant, I wasn't sure what was gonna be said here, so if you have any redundancy, I want to affirm some of the statements that were said today. This concerns enough to warrant a deeper investigation before the district dedicates capital funds to improve our turf fields. Due to this concern, my opinion on this matter is that the district must perform and make public a risk assessment for all courses of action and sources of turf material. That risk assessment must take into consideration not only the short and long-term effects of potential toxic exposure to the different materials available, but also acute injury, cumulative trauma due to the different cushioning properties of the various materials. Included in any good risk assessment should be the cost-benefit analysis that takes into consideration not only the potential health effects, but also performance characteristics, such as traction long-term, wear and tear, and drainage. The district should not rush into a decision without first performing the required due diligence, especially when student long-term help and nearly $1 million of capital funds is at stake. The due diligence process must include sharing the results of this evaluation, the contractors under consideration, and all, all information on the materials that will be used. In the end, we may have to make a decision with incomplete information, and it has to rely on the element of judgment. Anecdotal evidence might be all that we have in order to make this decision until more comprehensive data is collected, as what's been stated. That may take years or even decades, and we do not have the luxury of that time. And in the absence of complete information, we must err on the side of student safety. The good news is that nationally, all the districts have made this assessment, so we should contact them and build on their work. What is most important is that the district uses a logical, consistent, and answer-risk assessment process that is documented and shared with the public. The use of such a process will not guarantee 100% correct answers, but will maximize the effectiveness of the decision-making process, increase the public confidence, because the decision rationale will be shared. Thank you all so much.
Excellent, thank you.
Can we have copy of this?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm Joseph Gervania, from the Montebello, and also, and also PTAs. I'm only asking the board to consider, if this referendum does pass next week, that we use safest material possible, and if needed, go back to the votes, get more money approved if necessary. They, don't rush into judgment, and rush to get a bid. They, if, we, we need more money. We have more money in our reserve funds if necessary, but we have to have a second vote on that. My only concern with this is that this was rushed through. These, this is my concern, is that these, this referendum should have been discussed January, and we should have had emergency meetings at the last minute with a couple hours' notice to discuss things. This should have been done months ago, before we asked the public to approve it, you know, you know, supposed to make the odds right here. Thank you.
Okay, any other public speaker? Sure.
My name is Olivia Irons. I don't know how to use my phone.
It's a worse, it does have to say.
I don't like public speaking. But I'm here because I have four kids, elementary, middle school, high school, all play, all have played soccer, do play soccer. I'm concerned that I did not specifically hear, and perhaps am mistaken, Mr. Wong, Mrs. Danzig, Mr. Topalco, and Dr. Adams, say they would not consider the chrome rubber as an option. I'm concerned if I vote yes, you will have discussions, but you could ultimately go with the chrome rubber option. So I'm not exactly sure that I can put my children's health in the hands of this board, and if there's a way to rest my fears, that would be wonderful. If not, I'm afraid I have to vote no. That, that's just my name.
Thank you.
My name is Gerda Cosgrove. I have three children in the district. I've spoken before, and again, the fact that this decision just came to the public about 72 hours ago is befuddling to me. The fact that, I, I haven't come to a Board of Ed meeting this year. I came to plenty of them last year and the year before. And I gotta tell you that I don't feel like one thing has changed from two years ago to today. And the transparency is constantly a problem. The fact that I, in one meeting, can feel the tension that's on that board is alarming to me. Because you're supposed to work cohesively for the district, and it doesn't feel like there is honesty. There's a little bit of honesty lacking here, and the fact that I feel like three of you said we're going to do our due diligence in how many hours? And, and you're gonna make a decision on something that you don't even have the facts for? And how many of you have children that are on this turf every single day? So I just ask that, again, there needs to be a connection between the board who's representing the public and the public. And it feels like there is that disconnect, and that, that you're here, and we're here, and we're not being heard and ever responded to. So I think that we need to put a little bit more communication in there. And the fact that there's a meeting, that's an emergency meeting tonight, when 50% of the district is at a concert, at a middle school, a high school, and they can't even be here to hear this information, is, is not fair. So I think there needs to be a little bit more planning and a little bit more communication in this district, and it is forever a work in progress, but in two years, I don't feel like anything, anything's changed at all.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paula Loeb. I have three boys who play on that turf or have played on it. I have concerns that, I also feel like it was a little bit rushed. I would have hoped that the board would have considered the safety concerns prior to putting a proposal together that basically pigeonholes us into the number for replacing it with the same product, which is the rubber chrome. I think that if due diligence was going to be done, perhaps it could have been done prior, to find out some bids and numbers, and perhaps present to the public, yes, although it might cost a little bit more, your children's safety is our primary concern, and then put the proposition to the voters to have them decide one time on the proposition for the proper safe product. Instead of putting this forth now, having people up in arms to approve or disprove this proposition, it's confusing to have to come back and ask for more. I think that certainly you run the risk of having, you know, concerned citizens, you know, pushing to maybe vote no on this proposition, where we have, as a district, parents and taxpayers have been very supportive of budget increases and tax increases to put our kids in the best school in the county, and that's why we live here. So we would appreciate, I think, having a little bit more concern and foresight into raising these issues, perhaps before they're put out to the public. We run the risk of having people go no on this one, I think, and do people go down the list and vote no on everything? Do we now run the risk of having the budget not approved? When people are hearing, you know, talk in the community of, oh, no, do people know it's only the proposition, or are we gonna have a budget issue? So I think that, I think that it needs to be addressed going forward. We would all like to have assurances that the safest product would be used. But again, I feel like using the number that you do use in the proposition is a little bit confusing, and it really pigeonholes us into the expectation, nervously so, that you might consider the rubber cancer chrome.
Propositions and the papers are printed. Would it make sense to issue a statement on the website or something, sign in superintendent's name, maybe board, work together, business office, everyone together, and assure the public? Because as the lady before said, it's, the word get, the word is out. Don't know, don't, you know, because it's, it's, it's just getting out of control. We don't know what is in, what is out. Are they, are they with us, or are they against us? What are they doing, that they wanna poison our kids? Show your support, show the love for our children. We all standing here in front of American flag. I wasn't born here. But you were. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Janelle Brown Cosgrove, and I'm a parent of elementary children. And two of my children play two nights a week on the turf fields at the high school. My husband also coaches there. You know, I guess my concern is that you're not gonna have any more research. There is no meta-analics, analytic study that exists. There's no longitudinal data that we're gonna reflect on over the next week or so. And frankly, God bless the parents that gave informed consent for their children to participate in that study, because they're the ones that are gonna dictate what we do in the future. And, you know, as, as Dr. Howard said, the risk just seems too great. When you think, you know, I think back, my father played football for Southern High School over 60 years ago, and his best friend did as well. They both went off to college together, and they both happened to play football in high school together, and they both happened to develop early on said Parkinson's disease. Now, I don't need any causal research to tell me that there is more than just, it's just ironic that that happened, right? One could surmise that it happened because at the time that they were playing football, precautionary measures weren't in place to protect them. And we know that now, because we're informed, and the past informs the current. And we're at a juncture where we can actually make a difference, not only in the lives of the children who are playing on these fields now, but in their children and their children. So I feel like the future can look back on this board and can say, wow, they took a stance. While it might not be the most fiscally solvent decision to make, and while it might trump, trump pragmatism, safety, to me, and I'm sure to all of you deep down, is where it's at. And you could truly be reflected on in years to come as seven members who made one of the greatest differences for Rampro Central Schools, or you could resign yourself to the position where I think you've been recently. And that would be a tragedy and a travesty to us currently and to future generations of children who are attending these schools. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kelly Henry. I'm a teacher in the district, as well as I have three children that live in the district. Actually, my oldest son graduated two years ago. He was a preschool athlete. He played on the turf for football, he was on the track team. I mean, he was definitely involved in playing on the field. And my stand tonight is just really, we have to be proactive instead of reactive. I didn't realize the extent as to what was really involved with the turf. I just know what my son would come telling me, if he would say, Mom, you know, it looks nice. He's like, you're mad, he's telling me this. And now I felt like I had to come here tonight, because after three surgeries, not saying, maybe I need to blame, so I'm gonna blame the turf if I have to. But in addition to, you know, these possible cancer clothing agents, I mean, he's had ACL tears, he's had surgeries, 20 colleges, coaching one, and they all pulled back because of, I mean, you know, I don't know if one thing was related to the other, but, you know, he definitely, not only him, but his friends have a lot more injuries than I've ever heard of since the turf. And I don't know if it's just me, but I, it was probably a little passion test. I mean, you know, I feel like it's a lot of upkeep, but if that's the biggest thing, I, you know, I don't see as a parent that, that would be, it is concerned.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Holly Quinn. I am a fourth grade teacher at Montebello Elementary. I have had two children go through the schools, both of them play sports. One of them was on the turf continuously, chewy, field hockey as well as track. But I think what we also need to understand is that these are not just children who are playing on the field, sports related. Our students from Montebello are on the field every day. They're on the field for PE, and so are the middle school children. We take our kids out on the track during recess. We also have a field day, and our Olympic day is on the track. And if you haven't been on the turf, you should know that it's usually almost 20 degrees higher. It will lick the temperature. And so students who are being told, yes, you can go play on the field because of the temperature that it is outside, it's not the same on the field. I've had many field days where we've had students pass out. It's been extremely hot, and that's because of the heat that's being held within the field. So I do appreciate the fact that you're looking into it. I sincerely thank you. We not only have students on the field, we have coaches, and adults, and teachers, and many other people, as well as our community, who use the track, and they walk in it almost every day. So this needs to be, please, kept in consideration when making those choices and wanting to go. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, can I ask it?
Do it, do it.
Discussion?
No, why, why, carry on.
I mean, I feel like I, granted, I've done a lot of research, but I feel like I'm ready to say, if the rest of the board is, you know, to write something saying we will not use the rubber pellets. Can we do that as a board tonight, and put that on the website?
My only, my only. Oops, is that working? My only concern is that we don't have a full contingent of board members, where, you know, I, I don't like the chrome pellets, and I wanna look at the, I know there's like 9 million other options now adheres. So really, it's, you know, when I talk about, you know, looking at all the options, it's, there's a lot of stuff to look at.
But none of the other options are toxic substances.
No, well.
Can you state your, your opinions? What would you vote for if you had to vote today?
If I had to vote today, I wouldn't be voting for the chrome pellets. So, you know, but, again, like you said, you wanna take a vote with all the board members. We have two board members that aren't here.
Is there a way to get the board members who are absent opinion on this, and maybe have the statement really be affirmative and accurate? Not, not, again, vague and ambiguous? We don't wanna make a statement for a vague proposition that's as vague. We want, we wanna be specific. So is there a way to get feedback from the board?
I don't, I don't really know, and I would have to, honestly, I would think, consult counsel to make sure that we can, their, their conversation and discussion is important for the public as well, so. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we can actually do that, so.
Five is majority.
Hold on, hold on, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. So that's my, that's my concern. If it's, if it's allowable, then fine. You know, I don't have an issue with it necessarily, but.
My concern was just, as I just said, is we can, we agreed on a statement being reassuring to the public, and, and the way to proceed since the ballot cannot be changed too late for that. We agreed on that concept as the five who are here. Again, the other two were not present. But I'm afraid of that statement, again, not being specific enough. Yes, we can't say exactly what we're using, because there's a lot more studying and research needed that we need to do as a board. Not scientific research, but research into what's available, what's the price, what are the safety measures? We wanna see material safety data sheets, as I mentioned a week ago, for every element or item that we're considering, even remotely. What exactly are the chemicals in it? What, you know, what amounts of it are in it? And run that by people who don't work for the industry, who are, again, you know, scientists with no other, you know.
No agenda.
Yes, no agenda, no, no alliances. So, so my concern is for a statement, again, to be very general and not really do the, the job that we are intending it to do. That's my concern, so, you know.
The point about this is that you have two board members not here, and you're really not gonna be able to.
not going to be able to poll them, because if you do, you'll have to convene another meeting to get them to do that.
We all agree, we're five people here, and so even if they, I mean, I would like to hear their opinion certainly, but it's, I know for me, it's not going to change my opinion.
Hold on, I don't know where we are. Hold on. At our.
Well, I think if we were to have a discussion among ourselves in terms of board members, if, you know, you were to ask the board members, well, how do you feel about chrome pellets? And based on what, and again, as I said, I rely on experts, you know, people that are in the medical profession. So, if you tell me that chrome pellets are known carcinogens, or the possibilities exist there, I'm going to have to rely on what you tell me. I defer to that, so.
But I guess what Marlies?
I'm sorry. What Marlies is asking is more so, should our statement be that definitive, that we will not use this? Should our statement that we're talking about or discussing should be that accurate, at least include that reassurance? Can we? Yeah. The question is, we agreed on a statement, but can it be that? Can it state that?
Again, I think it's a, it's a very big decision, not that we don't make big decisions every day, it's a significant decision, and it's important to hear from all, this is a seven-person board, not a five-person board, so, again, I think we agreed to, that we were going to put a statement on the website with respect to this, this issue, and that we would use the safest alternative and ensure the public that we will, you know, we'll look at all, or as many as possible at least, options with respect to what to replace the fields with. You know, short of, short of that, I'm not necessarily comfortable taking a vote now without the other, the input from the other two parties, the other two members. But again, that being said, you know, we proposed we're going to use the safest material based upon our research, or, you know, as Amani said, not maybe our own medical research, but whatever input we can get from the professionals with respect to the infant. So, I don't know. No, I would, I would vote for no pellet, if that's what you're asking, and I'm not answering questions here because it's really inappropriate, I mean, just because of the way we run the meeting, but I would, as of right now, I would vote no pellets, chrome rubber, because it's, that's the data we have. So, but that being said, I don't know if it's appropriate until we get the input from other board members, and I think we're putting a statement out there already with respect to how we will handle this, this process from here on in, or from, you know, here to the end. So.
For the record, I would be comfortable to take a vote tonight, that we say no chrome rubber on a statement on the.
I think if you did that, though, the statement that's formed, it would have to just list us, and we'd have two board members absent from the statement, so the statement wouldn't be the entire Board of Education, because we would need their input as well. If we were to specify the fact that we are saying.
But if it was man and a son, we could vote for rubber, then even if they voted against it, it would still pass.
You should still consider their input when making a decision.
Say that again?
You should still consider every board member's input when making a decision. Like I said, I mean, you know, you know, as of now, I would say no chrome rubber, but I have no idea what Teresa, or Tom for that matter, would say with respect to this. You know, there's seven board members, and for a decision this important, it's important to get every board member's opinion.
I guess everyone has committed publicly who's in the room today, in terms of board members at least, that that's how they're voting on.
Yeah.
Well, because as it stands, as it stands today, that's the information that we have right now.
Can I ask a question? Oh, can we still ask questions?
Yeah, I guess I technically didn't close out in public, but I'm going to.
You did.
No, 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 I didn't. No, I said I didn't.
That I heard. It was mentioned previously that the attorney was working on some wording, when will that be completed? The timeline, will it be posted before the election? It will. And what is the timeline for the field? If it was to pass, what's the timeline of when this work would start? How much time do you have to investigate?
I don't, I don't think there necessarily is a timeline with respect to when it would have to be completed. I mean, obviously, we want to deal with the issue immediately. We want to do it as soon as possible.
Right, I thought that was the whole point, why the proposition was put up in such a quick manner.
Well, it was presented at, well, the issue was presented at the budget meetings, and what happened, so.
And if I might address that, you do have a majority here, that when the calendar was voted on, board members were missing, and it was rescinded. So, you can vote, and maybe you could rescind it down the line.
That was inappropriate. You're right.
That's okay.
Okay, at this time, I will close the public portion of this meeting. Okay, anything further? Do you have any comment? No. Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn.